Call the City of Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Evans.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together again this still very warm evening to perform city business. We ask for your continuing oversight of us and our staff as we continue to keep Apache Junction a great place to live, work, perform business, and raise a family. We are encouraged with the cooler temperatures in the early mornings to return to our many outdoor activities. We all enjoy your creation and are anxious to return to our normal activities. We also ask for your continued oversight of our nation as we come to the polls and vote. This nation was established on the idea that citizens of our community and our nation elect our leaders and has worked for well over 100 years and desire it to continue for many hundred years more into the future. We as a council encourage everyone to vote. We also want to ask for your protective hand for our first responders as they continue to protect us and our belongings, keep them all safe, and we extend this to our military members and their families from our community wherever they are serving throughout the world. Keep them all safe, bring them home very soon, in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Strubel.
Here.
Do we have a quorum, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that Resolution Number 20-34 authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the U.S. Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management for preparatory rodeo grounds purchase costs and that the First Amendment for janitorial services between the city and JB Superior Maintenance Services for additional services for five parks and recreation facilities in the amount of $65,340 a year be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember. Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
You'll notice on the agenda that there was going to be a 40-year service award for Keith Bedwell of Public Works. He could not make it, so in two weeks, we're going to give him a 40-year and two-week service medal. So, I have a proclamation for domestic violence awareness. Whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion, and whereas domestic violence in any community may exist as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized reality that is often not reported to authorities, and whereas there is a need to challenge the assumptions made about domestic violence, become proactive in preventing domestic violence, and hold offenders accountable, and whereas the City of Apache Junction, the Apache Junction Police Department, the Community Alliance Against Family Abuse, and other agencies, organizations, and state coalitions across Arizona and the nation are committed to preventing domestic violence by promoting prevention awareness campaigns, educating the community, and advocating for victims' rights. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 20th as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Apache Junction and urge all citizens to work together to prevent domestic violence. And I think we have a board member, Sharon Steiner, from the board to accept this, and I'll come down and get it to her.
So nice to see you again.
How are you doing?
Let's get a little picture.
And I look so intense, doesn't it?
Your Honor, before, I didn't get this to you, but before we move on, I do have a video that I'd like to share regarding national domestic violence. Is it okay if we share that from the governor?
Hello, this is Arizona Governor Doug Ducey. Everyone deserves to be safe at home, but sadly, each year, millions of Americans suffer from domestic violence or abuse. People from every age, every race, every gender, every religion, every walk of life. In fact, one in four women and one in 10 men have experienced some form of sexual or physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And one in nine children have been exposed to some form of family violence. This October, as part of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the Arizona Capitol Building will once again be lit purple as a symbol of hope and support for domestic violence survivors. I encourage every Arizonan to join us in showing your support by lighting your homes and businesses purple throughout the month. Across the country, challenges related to COVID-19 have increased risk factors for domestic violence, so now more than ever, we must stand up to stop domestic violence and help get survivors the support they need. If you know of anyone who may be in an abusive relationship, help is available 24 hours a day by calling the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-7233. To find out how you can support domestic violence awareness, education, and prevention efforts, please visit itcanstop.AZ.gov. Together, we can make a difference. Together, Arizona can stop domestic violence. Thank you.
And you'll notice the city hall's lit up purple. Did we do the focal point, too?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Your Honor, thank you. I just wanted to show that, and like I said, more than ever, this is our time to work together, and we are so grateful for the partnerships like CAFSA and so many families that work in partnership with this important issue. Thank you for your support in adopting this proclamation. It shows great leadership to the men and women of our police department as well and so many others that are involved. Thank you.
Current events will start on the Jeff Strubel side.
Okay. I got a couple things. That's, the first one is, back in May, when the schools were doing virtual, or not, we decided to honor our graduates by giving them a gift certificate to some local restaurants, and it's, they're still good through December 31st. So if you guys know of anybody who graduated from one of the high schools here in AJ, the AJUSD, Imagine Prep and the high school, the one on the 60 there, the Apache Junction High School, if you know of any of them that have one of these certificates, they're still good through the 31st. We have the money available through the LDR Foundation, so really encourage them. It's something that helps the local businesses by bringing people in there and hopefully spending more money than just $20, but just remind the kids that they're still available. Then, what else, what's the next one? AJ Open Mic Night, we're doing that again this Friday night at the Table of Grace Church. It's another avenue where we highlight the talents of our young people and our older people, and we do everything from music, poetry, comedy, whatever it might be. So if you have anybody who would like to come and show it off, it's not karaoke, it's a place where you can come and play your own instrument, sing songs, do whatever it might be, so it's a great avenue for that. The next one is Project Showers. Again, we had a great showing this, two weeks ago, we have another one this Sunday. We actually had 76 meals, seven or eight showers, and it's not, the showers are for anybody who needs them, and actually, shoot, the food is for anybody who feels the need to come and just get fed for the day. So there again, it's at the Salvation Army, just come and enjoy some fellowship and all that goes along with it. Then, we're doing the Fourth Annual AJ Kids Idol this year. We're starting the auditions, so there again, if you know of anybody who, any children K through 12, who either live in or attend school in Apache Junction, we're having the auditions on August, or excuse me, October 22nd, October 31st. That's a Saturday, that one will be in the afternoon, and then November. And you can contact either myself or Brayton Biggs for that. And I think the last one is, yeah, the Celebration for Veterans is, that's July 11, or excuse me, July.
July.
November 11th. I'm sorry, I do taxes, my brain is all over the place, different years, different months, everything, but September 11, November 11th. And this year, it's not going to be at the park, it's going to be down here on Phelps Avenue at the VFW, and just come down and enjoy the celebration of our veterans, the people who served to protect the rights that we have, and there's going to be some festivities going on, and like I say, the venue's going to be changed. I don't know if anybody else is going to talk about it, but just wanted to get out there to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Councilmember Evans.
You might notice I'm not wearing purple tonight like most people are, it's kind of a different version of purple, but this coming Saturday, the first Saturday in months that's supposed to be under 100 degrees, we're having our second Make a Difference Day. It is, unfortunately, had to be way scaled down from our first one where we had over 150 volunteers, but because of the COVID and the regulations that the nonprofit, the community development corporation has to abide by, it's been greatly reduced. We are going to do a cleanup around the focal point. We are going to do a, the eighth mile botanical walk at Silly Mountain. There's a group out there that is going to be cleaning up the desert, and unfortunately, someone stole a bunch of the cactus out there, and with assistance from the city, they were kind enough to share some of our, from the focal point, the yellow cactus are going to be planted out at the botanical walk. And we do have one code case family to help clean up, but it's sort of a special case, and the way we have to do it is, sign up is at 8 o'clock Saturday morning at the focal If you're going to go out to the botanical garden area at Silly Mountain, we ask you to just go there directly. At the focal point, we're going to have two dumpsters for people that have the ability to, that can bring some trash or junk and drop it off there. And none of this should take very long because the projects aren't that big, except for the one family cleanup is kind of significant, and that, we're sort of concerned about having a lot of volunteers over there for some safety reasons. I would like to thank Sandy Russell from the Modern Woodsman of America. They donated $1,000 to the CDC, and we were able to finally put that towards buying shovels and rakes and gloves, so everybody doesn't have to bring their own, we'll be able to supply that as time goes. Republic Services donated the four dumpsters, Ace Hardware donated equipment, and of course, the city, with the aid of the different departments, donated some cactus. So it truly is a community effort. This year, we're not going to be able to go down the median like we did last year, but that is going to be a different event come November when it's a little bit cooler. It's open to anybody that wants to help, just come at 8 o'clock to the focal point, sign up. If you have trash or things you need dumped, please feel free to bring those, just no hazardous waste. If you have any questions, you can talk to me afterwards.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. I'm kind of talking to a limited number of people out there, but, well, as some of us may have heard already, the sewer district has stopped taking horse manure as of this past Friday, and I've received a couple of emails, and I wanted to quickly address it. The reason for the stoppage is not because of the horse manure being, causing a problem or what's going into it, is the EPA has a rule out there on what can and cannot be in compost material, which is what the horse manure was used in conjunction with the human waste that was composted, and that material has been testing, I would say, bad, if you want to call it, and so therefore, they have elected to stop composting the material until something that can be done to resolve it. They are currently working with other waste management industry in trying to resolve the issue, and they want to get back and starting on it again because it works very well, it's very servicing to our community, but unfortunately, right now, they can't see bringing in the additional, I'm going to call it the weight, that they have to turn around and haul off, and it costs them a lot of money to haul this stuff off. So unfortunately, it's stopped for right now. We're working on possibility, trying to see what we can do, offering some additional avenues, but we're going to struggle through this, and I encourage people to stay tuned and figure out what we can do.
Robin?
Um, no, I don't have anything. Oh, you said Robin.
I said Robin, but now I'll say Robert.
No, I don't have anything, Ms. Mayor.
Robin.
I've spent the last week on Zoom. I've become very proficient at Zoom. The MAG Regional Meeting, Domestic Violence Meeting, and the Economic Development Meeting, and Economic Development 101 for elected officials. That's very interesting. If you haven't been on it, check it out.
It was.
Very interesting. Another one this Thursday.
And anybody can go to that?
Yes. Yep.
Yep, you just have to register and go.
Okay. Krista.
Okay, I just have one. If you notice, if you go around town, it's election season and everybody hates the signs, but there's been a lot of vandalism and damage to certain signs, and it's not worth it if you get caught. I mean, I believe our PD is looking for them, so, and they will prosecute. I mean, it's very serious, and it doesn't help either side, so just let them, let, you know, let our system take, you know, work, and...
And those signs cost quite a little bit of money and...
Yeah, and the effort to put them up, and then, you know, it just makes, it makes whoever does it look bad, not the other way around. I want to talk about the medians also, then I'm going to hand it off to Bryant. And if you go down, anybody that goes down Royal Palm is a great example of what you can do to enhance the medians, those trees, even in the poor summer we had with no rain, they're still thriving over there, and you'll see the work out there right now, Bryant. That's my last one, if you want to just take it from there.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. Yeah, so starting here, this Saturday and future Saturdays, you'll see more Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department staff out in the median, in the Apache Trail, near the Ironwood area, you'll see some drainage projects that are going to eventually culminate in some plantings and with some groups in November. And so this has been a longstanding effort to get the median to look great, and we wanted to let the community know that there'll be some, this project will be going on. And then, Your Honor, I'm very pleased to have with us here tonight a special presentation regarding the accreditation through the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program designed to ensure compliance and establish standards. I am very proud to say that our police department, not only one asked for, but embraced the idea to come and look under the hood, have an opportunity to measure against our practices and our policies, and have a full evaluation. And so tonight, Chief, can we turn it over to you first, and then you can do the introductions of our guests?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council staff. So this evening, I'm going to hold my closing remarks toward the end, but this was a long process. It wasn't an easy process, and every member of the department played a role in it. But without too much further ado, I'm going to, the two members that are going to represent or do this, speaking is Kevin Ray from the accreditation, he's the program manager for the accreditation program, and then Chief Pete Wingard from Paradise Valley is one of the board members, and they will probably go in a little more detail in regards to some of the things we had to go through. But if I can have either one or both of you come up? Obviously, the one in the uniform is the chief, and the other one is not.
Is not the chief.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, it's a great opportunity to be here. My name is Pete Wingard, I'm the chief of police for Paradise Valley. I'm here tonight with Kevin Ray, who is the program manager for the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. It's truly an exciting day when we can extend accreditation to a most deserving police department. In 2017, the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police, along with our partners, the Arizona Risk Municipal Risk and Retention Pool, the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and the Arizona Peace Officers and Standards and Trainings, started the journey of developing a statewide accreditation program to establish a set of best practices for the safe, effective, efficient, and non-discriminatory delivery of professional law enforcement services in the state of Arizona. Chief Kelly was a member of the ACOB Executive Board at the time and was a champion of the program, assisting in developing the standards based on his many years of law enforcement expertise. The Apache Junction Police Department was one of the first agencies to enroll in the program, beginning their self-assessment period in September of 2018. Over the next 20 months, the agency staff, led by Lieutenant Jeff Kirkham, worked diligently to ensure that they had policies and proofs of compliance for all 174 standards. On June 16th and 17th, the Apache Junction Police Department participated in an onsite assessment conducted by Lieutenant Brian Zach of the Kingman Police Department and Lieutenant Shane Sloma of the Lake Havasu Police Department. The assessment team spent two days in your community inspecting every facet and function of the agency, interviewing staff, city personnel, and community members. The assessors inspected all the divisions from the Operations Division to the Criminal Investigations, Records, Fiscal Responsibility, and the Property Room and the Dispatch Center, and found the AJPD to be an extremely professional and organized agency. Chief Kelly's commitment to the community and agency were on display, and his goals of providing courteous public safety services to all people, partnering with the community, and developing and maintaining a professional organization were all observed and noted in the assessment team's report. During the onsite assessment, Assessor Sloma completed a ride-along with Officer Josh Hooper. Officer Hooper was dispatched to a report of a stolen vehicle. Officer Hooper told Lieutenant Sloma that he was going to find that stolen vehicle and began searching the areas of the community. A short time later, Officer Hooper found the stolen vehicle and apprehended the driver. This level of dedication and commitment to crime-solving and other community issues is indicative of the value that your police department brings to your community. The assessment team repeatedly noted the culture of the organization, that the policies and procedures Chief Kelly and his leadership team have in place are reflective of the values of this community. It was clear that the members of the AJPD were engaged, committed, and proud. They were proud of the service they were, that they provide, the city they work for, and most of all, the community that they serve. On behalf of the Arizona Law, Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police and the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program... and the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, we would like to recognize Chief Kelly and the staff at the Apache Junction Police Department on this tremendous professional accomplishment. Chief Kelly?
It's a great honor to present that.
Al, can we get a few photos here? Your Honor, if you haven't, no, we have in the lobby some of our finest AJPD officers, men and women, watching.
I was wondering if we were expecting trouble to not...
Well, they can come in, and I don't know if they can come in, it's kind of getting full in here, but it's awesome that they're... We could even get a picture with everybody in here.
Yeah.
Al, can we move everybody back under the, a little bit here, a little more rooms? And do we want to bring some of the officers, Mayor? Yep. Chief, we're going to really embarrass them. So let's scoot back against the dais here a little bit, and that's the good light.
Excellent.
It's pretty awesome.
Excellent.
There's not really any place to hide.
Well, they're all so big, they won't see me. Oh, that'd be fun, right over the heads.
Something without me in something.
On his arm, yeah. Yeah, let's just do this.
We gave a few of you guys rabbit ears.
Yeah, we were, we were back here with this. You'll never know till you see the picture.
Mayor Surti, Vice Mayor Wilson. Again, it truly is an honor to be here tonight to recognize the Apache Junction Police Department. Uh, it has truly been my honor and pleasure as being the program manager for the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program to work with the men and women of the Apache Junction Police Department. You have so much to be proud of with your police department. We have two of your lieutenants who actually served the program voluntarily as assessors. So the, the knowledge and expertise that lie right here within this community, you should be extremely proud of your police department because I can tell you that on behalf of the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police, we're extremely proud. In, in the, in the times that we have seen recently, we've seen a, a slight decrease in public trust in police departments. And I think that it's really important to understand that all of the resources that you give this police department are utilized professionally, are utilized to do nothing other than to serve your community and to, and to do that very well. In the near future, you're going to see the logo of the accreditation program, except for at the bottom where it says accreditation program. This one says accredited agency. These will be emblazoned upon the patrol cars. So whenever you see that, just, just think of, of this moment right now and how proud you are of your police department, and you have every right to be, but how proud the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police and really all the law enforcement agencies in the state of Arizona are of your police department as well. Thank you. Chief Kelly?
Thanks, Kevin and Pete. Appreciate you driving all the way down from that other side of the world. What I wanted to do is just in closing, this was one of those adventures we had taken a challenge on. And Lieutenant Kirkham, if I can have him stand up again, couldn't embarrass him even more. He was kind of put on, not kind of, he was put on the spot. He was challenged with the fact that not only was he updating our policies along with your city attorney and making sure they made this, made the standards of today's world's use-of-force issues and a lot of other issues, but on a regular basis, between the city attorney and the city manager's office, these are routinely passed through me, through them, to Bryant, and then he eventually approves the, the policies that you currently see. But they're also meeting some very stringent legal standards. So when the challenge came out, and I'll go back and reflect, when I was on the association board, Chief DeVry, that was up in Kingman, is the one that had kind of the vision to develop this program. And it was back seven years ago, eight years ago, when I, I forget, it's about seven years ago when I was on a board. Bob was very passionate about getting accreditation. And there are some national accreditations, but this one is very unique to Arizona. We deal with things that other states don't do because we deal with tribal communities and a lot of the other things that some other states don't deal with. This program has been forwarded to the Department of Justice for their review. Their committee has been given a copy of our accreditation program. And I don't know where it'll come from there, but it is one of the programs that they're looking at as, as a, I won't say model, but a, the one that they can compare to. But anyway, Lieutenant Kirkham was challenged with this, and it took untold hours to go through each one of the policies, reading them, deleting things, either manually or even trying to find out what the most current laws were. And again, between the city manager's office and the city attorney's office, each one of those documents had to go through them. But it was through his pain, sweat, and my whining and complaining that he finally succeeded doing it. And when it came down to getting the assessors to come out, I said, are we ready for it? Because originally, Jeff told me that he would have this done in three months. A year and three months later, he was still creating documents. But it's not just Jeff, or it's not just me or our command staff. The entire police department played a significant role in this. Each one of them played a role in trying to get the documentation. And the documentation, as was stated before, we had to have proofs of that, what we did. So whether it was a police report, or a photograph, or piece of evidence, or whatever it was, had to be proved. When the inspectors came out, they looked at it. In fact, we had something where, I think one of the jokes that Jeff decided, in his sick sense of humor, was there was a point in there that wanted to make sure that our reserve officers and our police officers had the same uniform. They do. So we took a picture of a reserve officer, said reserve, and a regular police officer to show that we do have the same uniform. But it was one of those, he was going like, why are we doing this? We have the same uniform. But we had to prove it. It wasn't just because we studied it. But he put a lot of work in it, and he, he, to this day continues doing it. In fact, there's two or three sitting on Joel's desk right now that have been updated. But it's very important right now, especially as was stated, what's going across the country about defunding the police department and the transparency and the community support that we wouldn't have unless we had a city council that supported us and a community that backs us. And this community does an amazing job. One of the officers said the other day, he can't go down the street without somebody stopping and saying, thank you. That doesn't happen everywhere. And if you look at Portland, those poor guys that have been out there 115 days still, they're not got any thanks at all, not even from the city council. So thank you very much. Thanks, Joel. Thanks, Bryant. Appreciate the support. You two guys, appreciate it. I couldn't have asked any better. I know the, the actual president of the A-COP was going to be here tonight, but he had a council meeting that he had to present something with his city council tonight, so he wasn't able to be here. But I appreciate it. Kevin gave me some challenge coins to give out to the city council. And the challenge that I would give you and us is, first of all, find out what the history of a challenge coin is, if you don't know. And challenge us to continue giving you the service that our community deserves. So thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, that concludes my report. Just a huge thank you to Kevin and Chief for coming tonight. Thank you, and to Lieutenant Kirkham and all the men and women of the Apache Junction Police Department and our community for being prepared in this moment to be able to, to take on this assessment. Trust is earned, and we got to continue, and we'll continue to do so. And we appreciate everything that you do to help support our Apache Junction Police.
Krista has a comment.
Your Honor, thank you. I, I just wanted to point out in the presentation, from the organization that did the presentation, that to the public, in case you missed it, 174 categories were looked at in the police department. So this wasn't just a, a matter of filling out a little form and getting a few brownie points. 174 things were looked at in our police department for them to get this. This is a big deal, and when we see our officers, it is a big deal to thank them. We have some people in the community that are saying prayers for our officers, but it, it is a big deal that we thank them and let them know how much they are appreciated. This is awesome. Great, great job, Chief. Thank you, and the department.
Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of ordinance number 1496, case PZ 6-20, a request for, by ME Investment Group. And this is going to be Kelsey.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff. And this is a planned development major amendment of the property at 1081 South Meridian. So this property is located just south of Broadway on the east side of Meridian Drive. This commercial property is surrounded by residential on all four sides. The current zoning on the property is general commercial by plan development, or B1PD. And the request is to amend the plan development or to allow an expanded palette of uses. There are no onsite improvements being proposed at this time. So this property has been developed with a commercial use since at least 1985, but has had a long and complex zoning history. In 1995, an ordinance approved rezoning from trailer home site to neighborhood commercial and convenience store to allow the use of a beauty shop and resolve non-conforming issues. Then in 2004, a plan development approved a small courtyard office complex with a small palette of office-related uses, and for reasons unknown, the development plan fell through. Then in 2005, an ordinance repealed ordinance 1207 and approved a larger palette of uses on the property. And then in 2014, the property was inadvertently rezoned to R7M and was, went through a city-initiated correcting, corrective rezoning again in 2016. And then earlier this year, the property owner approached us about expanding the palette of uses that are currently allowed on the property. So this is a list of the current uses that are allowed on this property. There are about 35 total, so there are a few, but it is fairly limited. And the property owner expressed concerns about being able to potentially rent or sell the property if he chooses one day. And staff worked along with the applicant, as well as the property owner, to come up with a list of uses we thought were appropriate for the property. I'm not going to go through them all because it is a long list. But the proposed permitted uses, there are about around 80, 82 total. And then with proposed uses permitted by conditional use permit, it brings the total up to be around 90 uses on the property, as opposed to the original 35. And then this is a list of proposed unpermitted uses on the property. In terms of public input, the applicant sent out mailing notices on July 17th to all property owners within 300 feet. Two residents were concerned about medical marijuana and alcohol being sold or a potential use on the property, and they were assured that neither of these uses would be allowed. The city also sent out public, public hearing notices noting the time, place, and proposed request. We received one call regarding the PD amendment, basically just wanting to know if anything was being proposed at this time. So at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on September 8th, the biggest discussion was whether or not used car sales would be allowed on the property. One commission member thought that no car sale should be allowed on the property, but it was finally determined that used car sales would be permitted by right with no service or repair on site. And then used car sales with service or repair would be permitted by a conditional use permit because used cars tend to have more repairs that go along with them, and it might become too intensive a use for that small of a property. Staff recommendation is approval of PZ 620, subject to the conditions of approval found within the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well, if you have any specific questions for them.
Do we have any questions right now?
I just had one. Was the previous list of uses very restrictive? Or I, I was just kind of, after I looked at the list, I mean, I thought that was pretty wide, why they wanted...
I think, so I think the current owner obtained the properties around 2018, if I'm remembering correctly. And I think that they've just had a hard time finding someone to rent the property or potentially buy it from them.
So this is a newer owner than the previous...
Correct.
...times this has come forward.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Your Honor?
Yes.
So, so basically what we're saying here is we have slightly over a quarter of an acre, correct? And the guy couldn't find anybody that fit in the narrow range here. So we added a whole bunch of new ranges of possible uses in order to help him find somebody to buy his property.
Essentially, yes. And a lot of the uses since the previous ordinance, it was very restrictive. It could only be anything that you see listed on the screen. And so we kind of just, we went through our current ordinance and looked at the B1 allowed uses, and then basically just added to that. So that's kind of how we came up with our proposed list.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant, or would they like to just speak? They're not coming forward.
Mayor, good evening, members of the council. I'm sorry, I misheard. I thought you were asking if anyone wanted to come forward, and I was comfortable just sitting there.
Yep.
And...
That's next.
And I, I missed the part where you said, we invite the applicant up, so I apologize. I'm also just very grateful that all the police here tonight are for an award and not for me. I have been to those kind of meetings before. What an honor to have that award, though. I, through some of my other work, have involved in accreditations, and I know the tremendous amount of work, the high standards that are set. I was very impressed to see that this evening. Hope you didn't mind me sharing just that personal thought.
Sure.
Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Reese Anderson. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Pew and Lake, and my address is 1744 South Valvista, number 217 in Mesa, Arizona. Pleasure to be with you this evening. So I don't have anything more really to add. The staff did an excellent job on this presentation. I would just maybe sharpen the point just a bit to answer a few of the questions, which is, our client purchased the property in 2018, when he became aware of the limited uses that were there. We then started a conversation with the planning staff to see what was needed to be done, to expand it to a fair use of, if you imagine that a piece of property was, had commercial uses on it since 85, zoned commercial since 95. And it's not necessary to rehash the, the history of what happened when. You just, you've got a commercial piece of property, you just want to have some fair uses on it, given its context within the city.
Especially since we have the half exchanged now at the freeway now.
Yeah, absolutely. So thinking now about that, we really worked on a balanced approach to make sure that appropriate uses were allowed, uses that may cause troubles were, had a use permit. Therefore, the city had the chance to look at it and evaluate things. And things that we knew were absolutely problematic or were opposed by citizens calling in, those are prohibited outright. So I think it's been a great balancing effort on all the parties here on the site. I don't want to belabor the point, Mayor, but if you or any of the council members have questions, please ask. I'm, I'm happy to answer. Thank you for listening to us.
Are there any questions?
I have one. To your knowledge, as you own the property, has he been approached by somebody that could not rent this because of the list?
Yes, so, and, and again, with the change in the zoning over the time. So the, the, what started this, Councilmember Schroeder, was a conversation that happened probably about a year ago, where someone said, I, I'd just like to put a used car lot on this site. And so when they came down for a permit, thinking that there was no issue, then the staff said, hey, let's look at this old... look at this old zoning ordinance." And so, you know, a bit of embarrassment, but our client bought the property and did not check the zoning file. So have we heard that story before?
We have.
We have. We all have, right? And it happens. The point, though, is that mistake aside, now what do we do? What's a fair use of this site balanced against all those things I talked about earlier? Long answer, but I hope that answered what the question. So other than that, there's been other people over time. I'm not privy to every conversation. I just know that the client, Mike Tattavosian, is asking us to say, "Look, I've got other inquiries, and so I'd just like to move forward," with either him using it or someone else. But just a fair use is what we're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll have a seat.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
George Schroeder, two four four, West Virginia. We already have enough used car sales lots. The reason it was limited in the first place is because we don't want an overabundance of property that's not being served in our best interest, with all regard for the person. Obviously, they want to use it in the best interest, the most money they can make. Who doesn't want that, right? It's America. But AJ is inundated with too many of the same reflective, you know, source sites in our community. I think we're looking for more diversity other than restaurants and used car lots. So please consider that in your thoughts.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Jeff Barlett. I'm over at one oh eight North Meridian Drive in Apache Junction, Arizona. And the point I'd like to make is, there's, the point I'd like to make is that someone's trying to run a business, and I personally feel that we should protect our free-market ideas here. And I think that if someone owns a property, they should be able to do what they want with it. And I feel that we should have a free-market system on helping this out. And thank you very much.
Anyone else? Hearing seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. As far as I know, everyone in here is driving a used car. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fourteen ninety-six be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor. An ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving a planned development major amendment, case PZ dash six dash twenty, a request by ME Investment Group Inc., represented by Reese Anderson and John Gillespie of Pugh and Lake PLC, amending and expanding the palette of uses which can be allowed on the point two eight acres general commercial by planned development B dash one PD property, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fourteen ninety-six is read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Report on research conducted regarding the proposed United States flag at Flatiron Community Park. Director Langenbach.
Good evening, Mayor Sertie, members of the council, Parks and Recreation Director Liz Langenbach here today. Let me get to my presentation real quick. There we go. Okay. At your September first meeting, you gave direction to us to research the installation, maintenance, as well as other considerations of installing the largest flag in the state at Flatiron Community Park, as was brought up from community members that were interested in that endeavor. And so, in the meantime, over this last month, we have discussed with the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Arts Commission, we've also conversed with the VFW Post seven nine six eight and some of their membership about what they were willing and interested in doing. We've reached out to several flag manufacturers, and we also have some park staff who have had experience working at some of the car dealerships that have some of the larger flags. So we've definitely been able to look into a lot of different aspects of this research project. So starting off with just some initial costs, I think everybody kind of is in that eighty thousand to a hundred and ten thousand dollar ballpark of what the whole project would cost. It really depends largely on the pole size that we end up, where it's located, some different things. So that's kind of why this range is a little bit varied. The request was for a fifty-foot by eighty-foot flag, and that is going to be required to be a weather-resistant, very heavy-duty caliber flag. And those were in the ballpark of anywhere from about six thousand dollars on up to about eleven thousand dollars just for the flag itself. As we talked to different vendors and different locations where these flags have been, we were given the dimensions of either a hundred and sixty-foot on up to two hundred and forty-foot flag poles. And some of those depend on, I think, some of the expectations that we'll talk later on about whether or not we'd be lowering it to half-staff, different things like that. If you see on this image that I pulled from one of the sites, they kind of give you some general guidance on what your pole height should be based on your flag size. As you can see, fifty by eighty isn't even on their image. But they do talk about that the length of the flag pole should be at least a quarter of the height of the pole. We've heard different numbers, so anywhere from a quarter of the length to a third of the length of the pole. Once, you know, if this was decided on to go forward, then those would just be things that would be looked at a little bit more closely. Also in our research, if, depending on the size of the flag pole, will depend on how far, how much it has to be excavated, what the footprint of that pole and the footers are going to be for securing something of that size. Most places recommend that you would end up going beneath the ground level, at least ten percent of the height of the flag pole. So a two hundred and forty-foot flag pole would go down underneath twenty-four feet. And most all of them require kind of a footprint of approximately six-foot by six-foot square for where the footers and the concrete would be to stabilize it. Anything of this size would have to have structural engineered plans, and, you know, that can range anywhere from three thousand to about five thousand is what it looked like from all the folks that we had talked to about this. And then there would be, obviously, installation is kind of one of the biggest costs of the entire project, as well as the site prep, depending on, you know, if things have to be moved in whatever location was chosen, if we have to bring other additional electricity for lighting, those kinds of different things. If we have to move any kind of irrigation or anything at whatever different site might be looked at. And then finally, lighting. A pole of this size does require, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, but does require certain lighting, I'm sorry, a flag in general. If we're going to fly it, if it's going to be flown twenty-four seven, it has to be lit. That's the main consideration. We'll get into where there are some other lighting requirements here in a few minutes. So that was just the initial cost, the maintenance costs. We are kind of estimating about thirty thousand dollars per year. This would assume replacing the flag three times per year. So everybody we've talked to talks about that any flag, regardless of the size, in our weather, in our wind, we typically replace a flag every three to six months. Flag etiquette requires that it's a non-tattered flag. Our current flags that we use, we are replacing about approximately that amount of times. Just depends on what the conditions are throughout the year. So we kind of, instead of saying four times or two times a year, we just pick something in the middle. So if we had to do it three times a year at, you know, anywhere between eight thousand dollars or so per flag, in addition to the flag being replaced, there just will be some other incidentals for lighting, electrical, accessory types of things that have to be replaced. So thirty thousand dollars was the approximate cost of the maintenance annually. Next, one of the things you guys had mentioned at the meeting and as we talked through this was just lighting, making sure that we considered all the factors that would be needed to be considered. One of the vendors that we researched, we actually grabbed this from their website, Carrot Top Industries, is one of the flag manufacturing companies that we've worked with in the past. They showed examples of three different lighting techniques. They all have various pros and cons. So this one is above-ground beam, so it's basically something that's outside of, you know, a little contraption that sits on top of the ground, and it pretty much shines a light just in this general area. And as you can see, it's pretty dark everywhere else, and it's not shining. The other one is the ball-top light, so that is, oh, have a misspelling there, I'm sorry. Dang it. So this type here certainly lights the top of the flag. It definitely, it might need to be that at the top of it for some of our FAA requirements. There's some different reasons why that might be the case. But as you can see, it's pretty bright once it's on the top, and so that could be some concerns for some of our more dark-sky-friendly types of applications. But there are a lot of different manufacturers and different folks that can look into some of those things. And then the last application was in-ground. If you go out tonight, you'll see that our flags that are out front have an in-ground, it's flush with the ground, and it pretty much just goes up the shape of the pole. For a two hundred and forty-foot pole, I'm sure that that's a pretty big light. And so again, some of the things that we were able to determine, really until we get down to the basics of where it's at and what it's going to be, it was a little bit difficult finding some very specific information for all of you, and those would be things that would need to receive some further consideration. As I stated before, the Federal Aviation Administration, they do require permitting of anything that is over two hundred feet. So if we were to go to the two hundred and forty-foot pole, we would have to go through them for permitting as well as lighting of the structure at the top. And there are various applications for that. I do think that those are things we would consider, you know, without knowing, and I know we'll talk about that tonight, too, without knowing what our specific rules are with dark-sky ordinance. Those are just some things that would be of concern. As we looked at friendly pole lighting for, I'm sorry, dark-sky friendly pole lighting, the largest flag that I found so far was a twenty-foot by thirty-foot. A lot of the poles are in locations that either don't, might not have that ordinance, or they might be along, for example, the car dealerships are already along a very well-lit freeway system, and so they don't have quite the same, they have some exemptions for the dark-sky lighting. So that would be something that we would need to have further consideration. Location, I know it was proposed as a location for Flatiron Community Park, and so I just put a few locations in here. As we began this conversation and as we listened to our Parks and Rec Commission members, our Arts Commission, we did have a member from the public reached out to us through email. We just had a lot of, heard a lot of concerns about Flatiron itself. I think everybody's agreeable that we love this park, it's in the downtown area, we really want to have, it would be neat to have something like that there. There are just some challenges. So kind of just to talk through what, some of the things that we would need to consider here, in order to have the footing and to be able to put something that size and the clearance that we would have to have, really the only place that has that space that isn't in the grass is kind of in this far corner here, that currently the master plan calls for a large Ramada. And so, not that it's out of the question, but we'd have to go back and relook at the council, if that was a location that was determined that it needed to be, then we'd have to relook at the master plan for that, decide do we not want to have that Ramada. That is a future addition. This event right here is actually the veterans tribute on the weekend of the veterans and fots. And so having a Ramada in this area is kind of a very desirable thing, and so trying to figure out where we would put that, I think, is the biggest challenge. Additionally, Think Water is this section. We have an easement there right now that we entered into in order to receive the funding from AJ Water. And so there are things that are in perpetuity, if I said that right, that are located here. So again, we just would really have to really consider where it would fit. The other part that we talked about with our Public Works Director, Mike Weaver, I'd asked if he could give me some, if we had any kinds of restrictions as we are near to a road to have that type of flag that, you know, could very easily be, you know, blowing pretty widely. You know, are there any height restrictions we had to consider, anything like that? And he basically said that it would really just depend on where it's located, and that would be the case for many of these other sites as well. He recommends about a ninety-foot radius clearance from the base of it because of the way that an eighty-foot flag would stretch out, potentially be in that view of traffic. It seems like it's up so high, but I think it, again, just really depends on what that pole is designed like. Ninety-foot radius was something out, so like, in this vicinity and this size. And so it just really, the site is so small, it really ends up being kind of a challenging location for it. So we just wanted to put out some other ideas as the group considers. I know today is just a research phase, and I think we'll, I don't know if we'll have further direction after this, but Veterans Memorial Park, this is on the corner of Superstition in Idaho. This was actually another project that was brought to us by the veteran community. Back in nineteen eighty-two, we cooperated with the veterans organizations at that time. They helped to raise all the money for it. They planned it. They had weekly meetings for several years leading up to this. And this is actually a pretty big chunk of land. It's less utilized now because of Flatiron. We don't have our concerts and as many things here, but they have weddings. They have, we have had some other activities out here. It could be a really great location. It's still very close to the downtown area, so that's one thought. In addition, it's another, you know, this, they redid a lot of the plaques and things that were there honoring the veterans, but it's been many years. I think it's been almost twenty years since the facelift happened, and, you know, it really could use another facelift. So having, you know, this be a site of a better, a bigger project is a neat idea. The other location, Prospector Park, has lots of room. So there's lots of different places that you could consider. Prospector Park is utilized on a regular basis for many, many activities. It's probably our most popular park. It has the most use and a lot of events out there, so it's another idea. I think it's more in a dark skies area, though, so again, lighting is a consideration. And so we just would want to make sure that we knew that we'd have to go back to the drawing board with the group or with council to really reconsider the locations if this was moved further. Some of the final considerations, again, just through the notes from your previous meeting, as well as the meetings that we held since, we did look into the liability of, could there be some major concerns? It really is a low risk once it's installed, once it's there, as long as it's structurally engineered, you know, we probably would have low risk in that. The funding, I know was something that was brought up quite a bit, you know, as we talked with Dani Green. She manages many aspects of the VFW Post seven nine six eight that is located over by the Chamber of Commerce. And so we had a lot of conversations with her about, you know, what the veterans were interested in and what was the interest. She had reached out because I think the community member and the mayor had talked with her about them possibly being the financial pass-through. So their organization would be the one that would accept the donation. So it was coming through a 501(c)(3). It would be subject to transparency and all those kinds of good things. And so she had called us to let us know that that was something that they were willing to do. And we talked with her a lot about, you know, just some of the concerns that had been shared, and then with some of the questions that we had. and then with some of the questions that we had. And I think that at that time, and that was a couple of weeks ago, they had raised, I want to say $15,000, it might have been, maybe $10,000. And she felt that they, you know, she came up with the same numbers that we did, that it's in that anywhere from $80,000 to almost $120,000, I think she had mentioned at one time. And additionally, she had indicated that the group, as they talked about this, that they definitely did not, they did not want the burden of the cost to fall on the city, including the maintenance each year. And so I know that was something that was a concern. It's always a concern of ours, just because we do have limited funds and there's lots of projects every year that we're not funding. And so just thinking of adding new ones is tough for us. While we think it's a wonderful project, that's always a tough thing for us to consider. We talked with her also about half-staff and other considerations. So, you know, again, we started to be concerned, what does it mean to put a flag that size to half-staff? And, you know, it would come with the mechanisms to make it so that you could easily do that. But that would be something that we would definitely want to bring back and talk more about just because it does limit some of the other things that can be done. It limits where it can be if it's at half-staff. It definitely makes it so that you have to go with a larger pole. Those would be things that we'd want to make sure that we consider more fully as we move along, as well as anything else that needs, that the veterans feel are things that we should be concerned of. And then finally, I put this here as something for us all to consider. You know, in my time with the Parks and Recreation Department, and as I look through the history of a lot of our wonderful projects, they use, they come to us, many of them, as volunteer projects or as community-driven projects. And the members at that time are always wanting and desirous of not adding another financial burden to the city. But what happens is that over time, 10 years go by or 15 years go by, and the people who were having those conversations aren't there anymore. The military flags that are at the marquee right now are a good example of, you know, when that was decided on, that was another veterans project brought about to replace the Trail of Flags, which was a veterans project that was created on Apache Trail. And just over time, the people that talked about, well, the veterans group will always replace the flags. You know, our director isn't, you know, our former director is no longer with us, and I'm there. Over time, we just start paying for certain things. And so I think we just definitely want to make sure, something of this size, and as we move forward, I would, would just recommend that we think about how we can solidify those commitments somehow. And I'm sure it's not 100% possible, but, you know, it's something that I think would be responsible for us to consider moving forward. That's everything that I have. Happy to answer any of your questions, and then we can talk about next steps or if there are other steps.
So we will talk about next step in a little bit. I think with a heavy-duty enough flag, three months is ridiculous to have to replace it. I think, you know, that's going to be important, the quality of flag so that they don't have to be replaced. I was hoping on once a year or even more, so.
So as we reached out to some of those larger companies, they all are replacing their flag or taking one down and putting another one up and taking it to a seamstress, and then they will.
Those larger companies make money that way, too.
No, I'm sorry, I mean the companies that are flying the flag, not, so for example, the auto dealership, some of those different places, they are, they are replacing them at least a couple of times a year, if not more, just depending on the wind.
Okay. Do we have an estimated cost on what it is? You mentioned repairing.
So our Parks Maintenance Supervisor, Dave Butler, he actually worked for one of the dealerships, and it was his job to take it down and drop it off at the seamstress. He recalls the price being, and their flag was smaller than this, but not, I mean, it was still, it's still one of the biggest flags out there. It was like about $1,000, $1,500 at that time. I think he worked for them about 10 years ago, so I can't imagine it's too much different than that, but a couple thousand dollars probably to repair it. So you'd need to buy two, and you'd have one. They can repair it a certain amount of times until it can't be sewn anymore, I believe. But that's certainly an option that can be looked at.
Okay. And I, and I believe there's over $15,000 for sure.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, this is kind of a question. That size of a flag, how much wind would it take to get it to blow? Is there any?
So I don't know what the exact thing is, but that's what the engineering report. So I, you know, as we think about that, the whole engineering stamping, it seems like it's not a big deal. But Larry Kirch actually gave me one that was an example of one from another state for a 150-foot tall pole that has a 40-foot by 80-foot flag, which is so strange that the dimensions are different. So I don't know what that's about. And maybe it wasn't a US flag, it could have been something else. This one had a six-foot square footer that was 15-foot deep. But this is the packet that, and it is like all kinds of little dimensions and wind things. So I don't know what it is, but it's, they would be basically making, ensuring that whatever we put it in could withstand that and wouldn't do anything to it. And that's what those dimensions are about in here.
Well, I guess my question is, would, I mean, that size of a flag, I'm, you know, otherwise it's just going to hang hung, the flag is just going to be.
I see.
Most days, it's just going to be hanging there. But.
I don't know.
At what point, I mean, what, is it a 30 mile an hour wind that gets it to blow so the people can see it out there? Do we have any idea of that, or is it?
I don't.
It's going to depend on the flag.
So, this is not the best example, but this flag is the largest in the United States right now. This was like the 400-foot flag, or 400-foot pole. I honest, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know what size the flag was. But for the most part, I mean, it blows, it, things can make it blow in the wind, and I don't know how windy it is here, but. That's a good question, I guess I didn't really consider that.
It's going to depend on the quality of the flag, right? So if it's a light, so I, yeah, we don't know.
How about the heaviness of it makes it?
That could be another thing to consider as we.
Just asking.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if there was some reason.
Just out of curiosity, I don't expect that you would know this, but maybe for the future. Do we have any idea what size the pole is at the chamber currently? We've used that for the FOTS and the veterans celebrations, and I'm just totally curious to know.
At the, so the flagpole at Flatiron that we put up just during FOTS, and I don't know if it's the same size as the, did you say it, the chamber?
Chamber has a.
Yeah, so ours is 30-foot that we have right now, or that is at, and I'm not sure what the ones at the marquee are, but they're in that 30-foot to or so range.
I'd be curious to know what, what size it is at the chamber. Just to visually compare what.
For transparency reasons, we did, several of us had a meeting with VFW and some contractors, and they have some of the same conclusions, and they think that they could get it done at a cost savings, which benefits everyone, which then gives more money for the maintenance. They also took into consideration the ADA possibilities of if it is a structure, does it have to be accessible if there's a platform to get a wheelchair up there? And when you think of the veterans that would want to come to look at this, a lot of them are possibly handicapped. So we think we want to incorporate that into it, for sure.
Yeah, I think that that's another great consideration as we consider if this was to move forward, if you were to consider locations, same as if somebody wants to take a photo at it. You know, we tried to kind of think about how we could show it to scale, and it was hard. You'd want to really look to see if you're taking a photo, you know, how far away you'd have to be to be able to get the person in the photo, and that size of a flagpole. And then where is the best location for something like that? That was another thing that was brought up at our Parks, at both commission meetings that we should just make sure that we're considering.
And one of the, of course, electricity is a big issue, and they've come up with that it would need to have a chain-driven, you know, motor that you would access and turn it on and run it up and down. That way you wouldn't want to be hand-cranking that.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, yes, so there was a lot of different types of apparatuses to make that usable.
Chip or Robin, or Chip or Robert, do you have anything else to add? So, the next step, we need to get these contractors to compare notes with you and see, I mean, just to explore more possibilities, pro and con, and then move forward from then, and then.
So are you talking about the VFW picking the contractors or city staff working on the contractors?
Since they're donating the money, I think if they would come up with the contractor and engineer, I think that would be reasonable to do.
So, just to clarify then, so it sounds like maybe we're looking for some more information before we.
Well, I would like maybe to.
Okay, thank you.
So we've done direction to staff, we've received direction to staff. We presented the direction, which is to go do some research and provide data on this. If we were to move forward, I would like to seek direction to staff on what to do next.
And also, there's a little bit of precedent with the Kachina, which was presented the same way, but you couldn't just take someone's word that it's going to get up properly. So the city had to, you know, double-check and have a structural engineer make sure that it was going to be safe. And I would expect the same thing would happen if we did get, if they did come up with their own contractors. You'd want to, you know, check out and possibly get a second opinion on structure.
And in talking with the Feldman Services, Director Kirch did share that there isn't a permit for a flag, but having stamped structural engineer plans and that it's going to be installed per the plans, that would be what would, what we would be looking for.
So as of today, should we just let this, leave it off of an agenda until there's more discussion? Along with the.
We could put it on another agenda at a future point is what typically happens. From my perspective, I don't, I don't know what you all exactly want to do. The, the data now has been presented, it can be, you know, reviewed with the committee. I think that something this big is, it needs to be kind of some committee. I don't know who the committee is that's doing this, and.
One of the obstacles that I saw was that if it would go to Flatiron, the, the plans for the Ramada, and how big of an obstacle would that be?
Well, because this is citizen-driven and they're raising the money, should we just set like a dollar amount whenever they have 50% of the estimated cost or 75% of the cost to then bring it back as we're closer to finality of it? And then they would be able to have their contractors.
I don't think so, because if it's not going to happen, they're not going to want to raise, continue raising money. Because they haven't even officially started raising money yet. Once they get the go-ahead, then they could start fundraising in earnest.
And I'm not sure if this is accurate still, but a couple of weeks ago when I talked with Dani Green, she had said that they stopped really advertising, collecting the money until they could, they, she, again, I think my feeling from her was that she was very respectful of, and they're very respectful of that this is something that really needs to be considered and determined if it's doable. And that they didn't want to keep asking people, you know, they didn't want people to put in money and then have to give that back, kind of thing. I mean, they, they have a recording of what they have now, but they kind of wanted to wait until they knew.
So they want like an acceptance letter from the city that we're willing to take it, or they kind of? I don't.
I don't, I don't know what the next step would be, to be honest.
I think it was more in the aspect of coming forward with a presentation by the group as to, you know, a solid.
We want this size.
This is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to achieve it, and have different things set up so that it can be, I would say, looked at by the city to see it meets all the requirements.
So then I'm just throwing this out there then as a potential direction. If you want us to have a direction, can we do a direction to staff tonight? We can't, so we'd have to come to another meeting to do a direction to staff.
Right, they can tell me to put on a future council to talk about. I think part of the idea is like, in that process that we've done and used since 85, was to allow for this data to simmer in the community and go talk about it. And I would think you would want to be a part of any type of discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
And then we could be involved in that and be able to talk about some of this. And then at some point, vice-mayor, bring it back when you want us to bring it back to talk about to get future, future direction.
So, and do we know, is this just the one VFW post or are both VFWs involved in this?
It's actually six.
Yeah, so my understanding was that it was, I only talked to the one representative, just so you know, but my understanding was that it was several of the veterans organizations that were involved in the, yeah.
The question I have is at what stage do we start getting serious about location? Because that's going to impact size and other things, like you said, the lighting. It's greatly going to impact the cost. It may, you know, we already determined that it's probably not going to happen at Flatiron. It's, that's what it's sounding like, you know, you see what I mean?
Right.
At what point do we start saying, okay, let's narrow down the location in order to go forward?
I don't see why it can't happen at Flatiron.
You know, what would be interesting is to have the analysis done, like what could be done at Flatiron or what could be done, and the cost associated with each of those, because there could be some sentiment out there about, and maybe we're trying, because I don't know what the, the cost as it goes down in size, it could really significantly change the, the cost too as well, depending on.
Or the location.
Or the location.
Absolutely.
That's kind of what I meant.
Okay.
So we're just at that initial brainstorming part, and now I think we can go start to have more brainstorms. We, we can do that, and then when time is ready and you hear you're ready, we'll put it on an agenda and talk about it some more.
Okay. Okay, so we'll leave it hanging like that then, and we'll get it on a future agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want to take a break after this or before we start?
Probably before.
Okay, break now? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll call the meeting back into order. And then I want to make a couple of statements before we get started. These will all be individual motions, not one large motion. As we went through the applications last night, a couple of people got slighted because the first three people that we looked at had applied for different positions. And we only interviewed them, I believe, for library, but they were also interested in the other boards. Then as we got further into it, we started talking to every, every candidate on all the other boards. So, so Darryl Cross and Dirk Begum and Frank Shanebeck didn't really get to talk, to, talk about being on P and Z. So I just wanted to let council know about that. And also, this is my 12th or actually 13th year up here because we got that extra year when they unified the elections. And I've always been disappointed with how quickly this goes and, and it's such, so frantic and in a hurry. So I'm going to deliberately slow this process down. And after every motion, I'm going to take like a 30-second pause to have everybody get their notes together just so that we're, we know exactly what we're doing because these are important, important assets to the city. So Jennifer, do you need to say anything or just go right into it?
You've covered it all, Mayor. Thank you very much.
And I'm going to do them in this order. I'm going to do planning and zoning first, then board of adjustment, then the library board, then parks and recreation, and then the public retirement board. Yes.
Your Honor, can I add something? I just wanted to say to the applicants, first of all, thank you. I think this is the first time since I've been on the council that we've had this many applicants. So this is really great. There have been many years where people had to volunteer out of the audience because we didn't have enough people to fill the positions. So we're really grateful and appreciative of all the people that are stepping up and, and getting involved. If you don't get selected, don't take it personal. It's, it's, it's just sometimes other people have different backgrounds and whatnot and might be a better fit. And, and if you don't get selected for a certain board, keep trying. There's positions that come open, things change, so don't just automatically give up. Keep trying. Some of us have tried several times to get on some. There are some boards that would, are probably a better fit if you've been in the community a little bit longer and have a little bit of better understanding of some things. Or if you've even taken the Citizens Leadership Academy over some that, you know, the citizens leadership may not necessarily impact that. So, so thank you for everybody and, and don't give up if you don't get what you were applying for.
Okay, with that, I believe Vice Mayor Wilson wanted to make the first motion on planning and zoning.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to nominate Darryl Cross for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say, roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No, I had someone else in mind.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Your Honor. Oh.
Yep.
Is your thirty second up?
Robin's going to be up in about 10 seconds.
Ten seconds, nine, eight, seven, six.
Your Honor, if I may...
Yes, Robin.
Do, do we need a...
If I may?
Yes.
The motion, make sure to include the term.
Absolutely.
Because we do have, they expire at different times. But since this was the first motion, I assumed it was the 2023 expiration date.
Robin.
I move that Jesse Gage be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31, 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
I had somebody else in mind, no.
Councilmember Schroeder?
I had you add someone else in mind, no.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
There are a total of four to be appointed, right?
You're right, yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Your Honor? Time up? Almost.
Oh, God.
Yes, Councilmember Struble. I'm just, I'd like to nominate Peter Heck to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
So we will have one more and that will be, that board will be filled.
But what, which term is...
A different day, yeah.
It'll be the, the last term, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah, the last, there were four to be, four positions open. So I'll ask for a motion on that last one.
Your Honor, I move that Frank Shanebeck be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31, 2021.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
I had somebody else, no.
Councilmember Schroeder?
No.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
He's currently on board of adjustment.
Yeah, Jesse was too.
Yeah, but their terms were on board.
His term's up on the board of adjustment? No, no. I'm going to say no.
Mayor Sertie?
Hey, I don't usually have to make crucial decisions like this, but I'm looking at someone else too, so I'm going to say no as well. Sorry, Frank.
Motion fails, we'll need another motion.
Krista?
Your Honor, I would like to nominate Dirk Begum for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
No.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
I'm going to say yes because he was mine.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor, four to three.
Okay, now Jennifer, we have now disrupted the board of adjustment. So effective right now, Jesse Gage is off of that board, correct?
And his term was up.
2021.
Yes, oh, that's right.
And Dirk Begum's term was up in 2022.
So we have, instead of the three, we now have five people.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to do that board next and I'm going to ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Your Honor.
I've got Krista first.
I would move to place Joe Derbala on the board of adjustments.
Second.
Which, which term, Krista?
Whoops.
Oh, they're all going, no, they won't be the same.
For the longest term.
It's all here. Well, they all end October 31, 2023.
No, because the two that we're replacing, one's in 21 and the other one's in 22.
And the three?
And then three will be 23.
For the longest term.
For October 31, 2023.
2023.
Got it.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, I, I had Vice Mayor Wilson at the second?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
So there are four more to go there, so I will ask for another motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Sean O'Hara be reappointed to the board of adjustments for a term to expire on October 31, 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson? Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
That's three. We have two more to do and they have the same terms?
No.
That was two.
We've only have two, okay, so this is number three and I'll ask for a motion for that one.
Your Honor? Go ahead. I move that Luciano Buzzin be reappointed to the board of adjustments for the term to expire on October 31, 2023.
Second.
Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanim, sorry, motion passes, Your Honor.
Now we have two more and are they till 2023 or are these 2021s?
One more.
The next motion, if you like, will be to replace Jesse Gage. His term expires 10/31 of 2021.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion for that one.
Your Honor?
Robert.
I move that Caitlin Knox be appointed to board of adjustments for the term of 2021.
Is there a second? I will go ahead and second that.
Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
No.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to three, Your Honor.
We have one more and this is a shorter term, correct?
Yes, 22.
Correct, it'll expire in 2022.
Okay, and everyone's made a motion so far, so I will ask for a motion from someone.
Trying to figure out who else applied.
Yeah, we definitely did not have that many apply for that board. So my recommendation would be someone with P and Z aspirations because it ties so closely to that board.
Mayor?
Yes, Jeff.
I'd like to nominate, I got to get the right first name here, Mr. Ozaki to the term to the...
Is that Carl?
Yeah.
Yes.
Carl.
Second.
Second, and we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Um, I, he expressly said he didn't, wasn't interested in any of the board's boards, so I would, I'm going to say no.
Okay. Councilmember Barker?
I didn't hear that. I'm going to say yes because I didn't hear him say that.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
I'm going to say yes because it'd be a stepping stone for him, even though he expressed...
We want a P and Z.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
I'm going to say yes because he'll grow to love it.
Okay, motion passes, Your Honor.
We have faith in him.
Okay, two down, three more to go. We're going to move on to the library board and there's four appointments there.
Well, you messed me up on this one because I had Dirk on this one and you guys took him and put him on P and Z and...
Yeah, it's, that's what's taking so long this week.
Yeah, but I will make a motion.
Okay.
I move that Pam Kraus be appointed to the library board for a term to expire on October 31, 2023. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Your Honor?
Okay.
You ready?
I am still trying to get us to take our time, so yes, I'm ready, Gail.
Oh, I feel like a pregnant pause coming in there. I move that Vivian Radzky be appointed to the library board for a term to expire on October 31, 2023.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
No.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
So that was two down, we have two more to go.
Correct.
And...
Your Honor?
I will ask for a motion from Krista.
Um, I move that Jeff Bartlett be appointed to the library board.
Is there a second?
For which term?
For which term?
For...
2022?
Let me get back over there. I...
The last two appointments are fulfilling vacant positions and they will both expire on 2022.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Excuse me.
Waiting for a second.
Did I get a second? I lost track of what was going on there.
Roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Um, no.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Oh, I'm sorry, I had somebody else in mind, no.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Then we have one position left and this is from Mr. Willie Howard's position, who was awesome for the city. He's very well missed. So I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Robin?
Okay, I move that Lori Wine be appointed to the library board for a term to expire October 31, 2022.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
So that fills the library board. So we're going to move on to two positions on Parks and Recreation and I will ask for a motion on that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Jesse Gage be reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Board for a position in, what, 2023 is theirs?
Yes.
Is there a second?
It's like two big boards.
Yeah.
And he's very active on sewer as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It looks like there's not going to be a second on that.
Okay.
So I'll ask for another motion.
Your Honor?
Robert.
Um, this is for 2023, right?
Yes, they both are.
Pardon me if I massacre the name here, Dialy Kayen?
DL.
DL?
DL. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
We have one position left here and that's also 2023.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm going to ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Mr. Wilson.
I'd like to recommend or nominate Judy Boyer for the position in 2023.
Second.
And I believe you meant Bori?
Bori?
Yes.
Roll call.
I can't read in writing.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
We have one board left, Public... We have one board left, Public Safety Retirement Board, and I believe...
Your honor?
Robin Barker has asked to nominate here.
Okay, I move that Jaime Wanza be appointed to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board for a term to expire on October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, your honor.
And one last position for public safety personnel, and I'll ask for a motion.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that C.E. Beal be appointed to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board for a term to expire on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, your honor.
Okay. Thank you for everybody taking your time on that and not rushing through it, so I felt better about it. Presentation, discussion, and consideration of Resolution two thousand and thirty-five approving a s- submittal for an application to the Gila River Indian Community Shared Revenue Problem, or Program, not problem, Chief Kelly.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, City Council, and, uh, staff. So, as you're aware, the Hila River Indian Community, um, under Propri- Propo- Proposition two oh two, uh, has a state shared program. Under that program, back in April, we had, uh, requested a grant from them to purchase some, uh, handheld radios. With that, uh, they, what they did is they changed the procedure. Where in the past, you had to do a resolution prior to making an application to grant, and currently, now they're asking a resolution after you receive a grant, which should make an easy resolution for you to agree to, which means that you're gonna get ninety-six thousand dollars to purchase police radios, which we daily need. So, with that, I would ask you to accept and, accept the, uh, proposal and, uh, do the resolution.
Is there any discussion? Or questions? I don't see any. I think this is, uh...
Do you, how many wrote, how much does that, how many, how mu- pe- how many pieces of equipment does that get us?
Um, about ten.
Wow.
Just wanted to let that out there, that those, those radios...
The handheld radios run around eight thousand dollars per radio.
Yeah.
And the hard mount run, uh, hard mount radios, which go in the car, are about the same thing, do about ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and how often do we have to replace those?
Well, the, the reason it's become a kind of a critical situation for us is the current ones we have are outdated, and Motorola no longer makes parts for them, and they also don't service them, and are, we don't have a contract with them anymore, because they don't make the parts for them. So, currently, the radios are still functioning, um, so that's good, um, but when they break, then it's useless, so that's why we've been doing these grants for a while. So, we've been very, um, blessed with the fact that the reservation, the Native American community has been very supportive of us, especially in this, this case here.
And do you anticipate, I mean, the, uh, the casinos took a big hit from COVID. Do you look at revenues to come down on what they'll be sharing?
It's really hard to tell. I mean, in the past, um, we, we've been, actually had some, a lot with some of the casinos recently. Uh, we hit Homeland Security gave us a grant, and then, uh, you'll be looking at another one, probably come to you from another, um, tribal community in the upcoming, um, thing next...
Soon as we can get it to you, so it's from Ok Chen.
Yeah.
So, so far, so good on that. We don't know what the impact would be a couple of years from now.
Yeah.
And in the past, in the past, we really were passed over. We didn't get any recognition or any, uh, grants, but the grants have really diminished down, so it's hard for us to guess. I mean, in all reality, the amount of, the money that we need, or the city needs to buy these radios is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and these little, little amounts, so ninety-nine, ninety-six thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it really replaces very few radios.
Okay. All right, I will, uh, ask for a motion.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that Resolution number twenty dash thirty-five, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction approving to the supplemental, uh, proposition two oh two and emergency, place, uh, police communications equipment grant application to the Gila River Indian Community be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Was that an answer to my...
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor?
Presentation update, possible additional direction to staff on the application for the nomination of the city of Apache Junction as an international dark sky community. And do I go to Robert on that? Or... Nope. We're ready to provide a presentation on the update from staff. Back to Kelsey.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff, um, and tonight I have an update on possibly designating Apache Junction as an international dark sky community. So, back in March, um, staff was directed to investigate and come back with changes to be made, potential cost to the city, as well as citizens, in becoming a dark sky community. For those, uh, in the audience who might not know what an international dark sky community is, um, an IDA international dark sky community is a town, city, municipality, or other legally organized community that has shown exceptional dedication to the preservation of the night sky through the implementation and enforcement of a quality outdoor light, lighting ordinance, dark sky education, and citizen support of dark skies. So, what would it take to update our zoning ordinance? Well, within, uh, over the past few months, staff has been working to, um, look at our current outdoor lighting ordinance and see what changes would need to be made in order to be compliant with the minimum requirements of a dark sky community. Some of those changes would include, um, having illuminated signs be turned off at ten PM or one hour after business close, whichever is later, having a lumen cap in non-residential and multifamily zoning districts in order to prevent overlighting, having light fixtures over one thousand initial lamp lumens, um, required to be fully shielded, and have a maximum color correlated temperature of three thousand Kelvins. And essentially, with the Kelvins, um, that just means it's gonna be more of an amber tone light instead of a cool blue tone. Um, this is especially important for wildlife at night. Um, the blue tone can kind of be harmful, so that's kind of why that is a part of the requirements. In terms of what it would cost to an individual, um, basically, so on the left-hand side, you can see kind of i- it's, um, a good depiction of what is not acceptable versus what is acceptable. Um, a lot of the, so in order to be shielded, you cannot see the light source, um, so it kind of depends on what fixture you choose. And on the right-hand side, you can see two examples that I found on a, um, on a hardware store site. The IDA provides a whole list and links online to, um, different fixtures that are dark sky compliant to make it easy to find. These two specific lights have a sixty watt maximum, um, in terms of the light bulb that you can place into it. They're approximately forty dollars for each fixture, not taking into account the cost of the light bulb. And this, the product feature for both of these fixtures, um, actually indicates that it is dark sky compatible, so it is fairly easy to be able to determine whether or not the fixture you're choosing will meet, um, will be in compliance. So, what does a dark sky community look like? So, as part of our research, um, a few staff members, including myself, went out to Fountain Hills and observed it at night. Um, it's a designated international dark side community, and so we thought it would be a good idea to see what that really looks like. Um, the picture on the left-hand side is of an apartment complex. Um, you can see that it is not overlit, but it, you can clearly identify where it is, um, and be able to walk around. And on the right-hand side is a bus stop. Again, you can see that it's not overlit, and the light is shining down and not spilling, um, very far past the stop itself. The next picture, um, this kind of shows you different signage and what that looks like. Um, as you can see, the, on the picture on the left, there is actually, or not see, there is a sign, uh, in between the nails and Euro pizza, uh, but since that business is not open at that time, it has been turned off, um, if it was even installed with lights to begin with. The signage has to be turned off by ten PM, like I said earlier, or at business close. This is another good example of signage. This is the same target. Um, the left-hand side is when it is open, and on the right-hand side, it is after it's been closed. Um, I took that picture, and that was when employees were leaving the store and going home for the evening. And then, this is at Fountain Park. On the left-hand side, you can see that there are plenty of, um, bollards lining the path, but you can still clearly see where you're going, um, but everything is shielded downward and not, um, kind of spilling over into the grassy areas. And then, the picture on the right is taken from the park, looking at a commercial strip center that has a few restaurants. Um, this was taken about eight o'clock at night, so things were open. There were many people outside. There was a live band, um, but you can still see that it is very dark, and the light is contained to the space. In addition to, um, figuring out what it might cost for an individual, we also discussed with Public Works what it would take to get all of our lights to be in compliance. Um, they estimate that actually only a few older streetlights would need to be replaced, and that all other streetlights are actually dark sky compliant, um, but we would not know this, uh, the full financial impact until we complete a formal lighting audit, which is a requirement, um, in order to even submit an application. It's basically, you're going around, taking pictures of the individual fixtures, taking a light reading of it, and then, um, compiling all of that document for city-owned lighting. In terms of parks and recreation, uh, many of the sports fields and court lighting are old and would not comply with the lumen or Kelvin requirements, um, but almost all of the lights are on timers and turn off by ten PM. Um, some of the parking lot lights are on a timer until midnight, but they could be moved up to ten PM if needed, uh, and this is basically just to allow a little more of a buffer between events for safety. And so, you know, why does dark sky lighting matter? Well, this was an actual, this was a recent code case that happened. Um, the, this was brought to our attention by a resident of Bellegave. As you can see, uh, you can't really see the picture of the fixture to the left-hand side, but it's kind of a spotlight, um, but the picture from the right-hand side is taken from her neighborhood, and you can see that it's supposed to be lighting, um, a personal storage and RV storage lot, but it is actually, um, kind of lighting the entire area and directed towards the neighborhood. And so, code compliance worked with SRP, um, to change out the lighting fixtures, and this is what it looked like afterwards. And I think the biggest thing to note between the two pictures is this one, you can actually see the mountains in the background, where this one, you cannot. Um, so I thought that was a, a really interesting view of, you know, what dark sky lighting can actually do for the community. And, um, so just like a summary of findings, um, the zoning ordinance would need to be amended to meet the minimum, um, requirements of a dark sky community, which we have been working on, and we are getting very close to the point that we would be able to, um, or feel comfortable submitting that information to a dark sky program manager. In terms of cost to the city, um, I said this, uh, last time I presented, but it would, city-owned lighting would have to come into compliance within five years, um, but a lot of the lights are currently being retroverted, so, um, we hopefully would be able to reach, uh, compliance within that five years, but again, uh, that's why the light audit is important. And cost to the community, um, all, uh, outdoor lighting must comply within ten years, and that was basically set into place because ten years is kind of the, um, the IDA's timeline of when a light, um, will fail. So, within ten years, it'll probably get old, you'll replace it, it'll break, um, so they think that ten years is a good buffer to allow people to meet, uh, the minimum standards. So, if we were told to go proceed and go forth and apply to be a dark sky community, what would the next steps in the application process be? Potentially forming a dark sky task force to assist in the application process. This is not required. Um, it is optional, but it is highly recommended. In speaking with the program manager for dark skies, um, many of the cities, especially in Arizona, who have reached designation as a dark sky community, have some other committee that has helped them gather all of the data and information and compile the application before submitting it. We would need to update the zoning ordinance, perform a light inventory, and then host at least two community outreach events. That is a minimum requirement before you can even submit an application. They understand that with COVID right now, things are different in how events are being held, and so we're seeing, they're seeing a lot of virtual events that, you know, might be an easier way for us to meet that requirement. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. If you guys have any specific questions, um, I will do my best to answer.
I have a question. So, we've always wanted a walkable downtown restaurant district, and with Dino's moving to where they're moving, you've already got Handlebars, Dirtwater, Captain's around the corner, Lacusita, and whoever moves into Village Inn, and it's very dark there. Wintertime, it gets dark now early, so we can add more lights as long as they're compliant and facing down, correct, and...
Correct. Um, with a lot of, from my understanding, with commercial districts, you kind of have a lumen cap, um, as to not overlight, but you're not restricted from adding lights, especially, um, when it comes to safety of a parking lot.
Okay.
So, parking lot lights aren't required to be turned off at ten PM, just the, the lighting on the building?
Correct. That is, um, that lighting still has to meet the minimum, um, Kelvin requirement and shielding, but it is not required to be turned off. Um, I know Fountain Hills is kind of progressive, and we noticed that a couple of their parking lots, they're actually on motion sensors, so once the business closes, the parking lights go off, but if someone were to drive through that area, they would turn on, so that is an option that, um, commercial centers could consider.
I, I, one of the concerns that I have, um, in experiencing break-ins and theft is break-ins and theft for businesses and residents. I know Fountain Hills, I don't know what their, their rate is compared to us, and, um, it's a definitely concern, because I've experienced it personally a lot. Hate having to say that, but, you know, it's a, and so my other concern is the cost to residents. Are they gonna be, you know, if this is gonna be, um, a code compliance issue, are we throwing more regulations on residents to, to comply, and will they be cited if they don't? What does that look like?
So, what do, uh, going along that, for security, motion lights, is there a limit on how many motion lights you can have? Let's say you do have a mechanic shop or a jewelry shop in the, in an area like that, and somebody's working on the back door. I mean, i- is that affected?
Um, I'm not aware that you're limited to the amount of lights you have. They just have to meet the requirements of being, um, shielded.
And they would only, they come on for, what, thirty seconds or so? So, Krista, what do you think of giving the, the business owners that option to do motion security lights?
We might want to hear from the business owners, and we might want to hear from our chief about their thoughts.
One of the things that the chief, or I know he has experts on, SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, sometimes you can overlight. By overlighting, you create shadows and things like that. I'm not an expert myself, but they, obviously, there are folks that are certified in it. They work with landscaping, they work with lighting, and I just know that a lot of times, if you overlight, then you can create shadows and dark spaces and things like that. So, crime prevention is not all just about lighting. It is about, you know, having, you know, not too much landscaping, not enough stuff to meet our landscape codes, et cetera. And then, um, in terms of the residents, I think that's why it's the ten years. I mean, all, a lot of fixtures have a life cycle, and so there was a picture of a slide up there, uh, on Smoke Tree. And so, part of this whole thing is educating the community, having these events, but good neighbor lighting, um, that was an example where we got a code complaint. We called that neighbor, and they have a huge yard light. It actually looks like a street light you would see at an intersection. It's actually in their yard. They went and they put up a shroud on it at probably minimal cost, and, um, so they complied by just actually shielding what... by just actually shielding what they had. So not every single light in the city. That question when I drove around with Vice Mayor Wilson, well, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't comply now. So a lot of this is just education. You know, do you want to see the night sky or not? That's really what it boils down to. As a community, do you want to be able to see that mountain from your backyard? Do you just want to look at the lights that are shining on, you know? More nuisance type lighting, I guess.
I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all throughout our city, though. I think there's a difference in living in the rural area closer to the mountain and living right down here in the downtown. And I don't think lighting, as far as safety, I don't think we're overlighting as far as making our downtown safe and walkable. I think it's pretty dark, actually, when you walk this side.
And I didn't say that at all. What I said was that you can overlight, that doesn't help your safety.
Yeah.
But yes, there's difference in residential and what you want to sit in your backyard and see versus if you're on Apache Trail, it used to be a US highway. What are the expectations? So yes, you can have different zones based on lighting. It's just that overlighting, I mean, I thought it was novel that they, O'Reilly's shut their, not only their lights off in the store, on the building, and in the parking lot. And then when someone came in to, that shouldn't be there, all the lights came on. So again, everything was on a timer. I talked to the, to the store manager, and he said, "Everything's on a timer, everything shuts off, but it comes back on in case somebody's there that shouldn't be there." So.
I just don't think it's a one-size-fits-all. I didn't say, suggest that you were saying that. I'm suggesting that I think it is. That we should possibly look at different areas in the community.
And you can do that. You can do that. But the lighting, and it's easy, everything that gets built today, everything, the Dutch Bros, everything that gets built in the last 15 years has complied with our dark sky, including what the city has done here at City Hall. And so I think that's why the 10 years for compliance for residential, five years for cities, because you do, and there are programs out there for, talking to Mike Weaver, that you can get, you know, and these programs are widely known to go in and get assistance. Mainly it was energy savings. You could get energy savings by switching over to LEDs, and then you would have the dark sky compliant fixtures kind of at the same time. So we're concerned, too, that we don't want to go out and retrofit, you know, 1,000 streetlights. That would be cost prohibitive, and I think for residents, too, is we don't want to make it onerous, but we also want, I guess, again, it's really, what are the overall desires of the community? What does the community want to get out of it?
Any more questions?
Yeah, so essentially, everything this city has done in the past decade would be dark sky compliance as far as things you would have to meet.
Commercial and anything the city has done. And I guess I would do the same thing we did, is go, go to Fountain Hills. Go spend an evening in Fountain Hills. Don't spend any money. Spend it here and then go. Go to Fountain Hills, drive around and get a feel for it. Again, it's a different community, I recognize that, and so is Cottonwood and Sedona and Flagstaff. They're all different communities, they have all taken different approaches. I don't think it is a one-size-fits-all. The IDA, the International Dark Sky Association, has requirements. You got to meet these minimum requirements, and they kind of work with you. But I think you see what, how from a business perspective it works, they have some older strip centers, and then they have new shopping centers and how, I mean, it was amazing to me that someone, we have seven monument signs for the fries. So you go to Target and you think, oh, there's the Target there, and they've shut their monument sign off. So again, if something's open 24 hours, you have a Walgreens that's open 24 hours, that sign stays on till 24 hours. So it's, it's one hour after business close or 10 o'clock. But if the business is open till 1:00 AM, then the lights are on till 1:00 AM. You know, they do want to think about safety for the employees, too. You work at a bar, a restaurant, they close at 1:00, you know, you kind of work with folks to keep the lights on till the employees all get home safe.
Isn't Fountain Hills generally considered upscale?
I think we're upscale. I think they, they don't have anything we got.
Compared to the?
But again, I just think it's, it's how it affects the business community. I think that's really kind of what we thought was this would be, we don't want to do something that's not going to, you know, work well with the business community. But I think they've found a way to work with it for business that have been there. Fountain Hills has been, part of their city's been established for 40.
Since the 70s.
Yeah. So I think you can see what an old strip center versus a brand-new Target. It gives you, there is kind of a contrast there that you can see by just taking a ride out there some night.
Larry? Oh, sorry. Do you know, does SRP or APS have any kind of a, do they work with cities on changing the streetlights that they own? Like in Sunrise Canyon, those were SRP streetlights. Do they work with the community?
Yeah, and I think they work very well in this particular case. This is an unusual one, where the SRP own the poles, but they're really lighting a private property. It's a mini storage and RV storage lot, and because the poles were there, because I asked SRP, wouldn't, wouldn't you rather have the customer have a bunch of lights inside their, their facility rather than you trying to light them all? And they found some fixtures and it worked. As far as other, I think they would work very well with us. And I think even as an organization, working with Janine, it was like, Janine Rehovit is the, is the rep.
Right, she was great. They'll help us, yeah.
She basically, from the inside, she's also trying to get the culture of that organization to change as well, to help communities out. So I think she was very much having the organization be involved in it.
Yeah, it was, it was from a perspective of definitely having the right lighting and doing what they can to help assist, and they were great to work with. And they have been over, on this particular project. Then I know through, through the years with Public Works, when residents have had issues, they've come and helped put shields up and help keep it out of their houses.
We have these streetlight districts. So the, within a development that has city streets, and there are assessment districts for those lights. So in theory, most of them should be, the newer subdivisions should comply, but if not, through the assessment district, when the lights go out, again, I don't know that, you know, they're all going to go out or be replaced, you know, on a schedule. But I think even with, working with those streetlight districts to try to replace some lights over time, because then you kind of have a revenue source. So most of the sodium vapor and high-pressure sodium lights are going away. Everything is going to LED. So then the real key is to not have the white slash blue light, but to go move to the warmer yellowish amber light. So they do make amber LEDs, too.
Did everybody get their questions in?
Of course, as you all know, I live in the rural part of our community, and there's several of us that have, I'll say floodlights, that we flood up the general area where our animals are, are, or even in an area where we would exercise our animals. During the summertime, you exercise your animals in the evenings and at night because of the wonderful temperatures that we have been experiencing. And so 10 o'clock comes awfully early, and you'd go in beyond. So would the lights still have to be off by 10:00 when you're at an arena?
Again, it's the wattage. It's, it's the wattage. So our current ordinance allows you to have 150 watt light bulb. And so this would lower it to 60. So retrofitting some of those light bulbs with, and shielding them then as well. So I think that combination could do that.
Then you limit, then you'd have to increase the number of lighting fixtures that you'd have to have out there.
You, you may so. You know, so we, one-size-fits-all, we can't say what all 2,000 properties out there, what's going to work for them. So we know, I think, just, I think off the top of my head, there's probably a couple thousand of those rural acre and a quarter lots. So everybody has an individual need, some are using old-style yard lights, and they, those could be put shrouded on. Some of those have the picture like the Cobra Head, but individuals using spotlights if it was, the other thing we have to look at again is with dark sky. Right now, our current ordinance says 150 watt. That's a pretty powerful spotlight or, or, you know, directional light. So a 60 can put out a lot of light. A 60 watt LED puts out probably almost, what, 100 watt regular incandescent would do. So again, I think it's going to matter as to how you light, where you light, and then it's all really about being good neighbor. I, you know, I think you were the first person that alerted me to these residential complaints. And I went and sat in somebody's backyard at 10 o'clock at night and saw what, hey, that guy got a new spotlight. This is what I have to look at. Did you go talk to your neighbor? Did you, you know, do they have things that you can put on a timer? So. I don't know if I have a right answer for you. I just know, yes, it's, there's going to be an educational component, and I don't know if someone uses spotlights because they ride at night, arenas, those type of things. I think we can work with folks, you know?
But if someone should be like in a position where Vice Mayor Wilson is, they would have a decade to change that lighting.
Yes, they would.
But back to his question, does his have to go off at 10 o'clock at night?
His does. I don't know about anybody else, but for her, for sure his. 10:30, we'll give him till 10:30.
But seriously.
No, there's no requirement on, it's the business lighting that was 10 o'clock, and usually it's the sports lighting. There's no requirement that a homeowner has to shut their lights off at 10 o'clock. It's really what can you do to be a good neighbor?
Right.
What can you do to shield it? What can you do to kind of bring the wattage down?
Which we should be changing the culture on that, on a lot of aspects of the community.
And again, it is all education, having, you know, events as part of whatever event we have at a rodeo, having a booth there and things like that, that are explaining to people what, you know, what, what the dark sky can mean for the community.
Anything else?
I just have one.
Yes.
So this is probably an important thing, because there's, there's a lot of, you know, questions, and some people are, you know, on the fence about it. Moving forward with this application does not commit the city to anything. Is that correct? I mean, we can, at the last second, say, oh, it's not for us, and we're just done. And we're not out any sort of financial burden because we're not investing in the things. This is.
Just the time, yeah. It's the, it's the volunteers on a committee, the staff time that would take to go through it. The inventory piece, it sounds like it's gotten easier. They actually have an app on the phone and a device that you, that they can loan you or you can buy it. They used to have to go to every single light pole on a street and measure it. Now you just do one and say, times 10 or times 20. So the inventory is a lot quicker. That device costs about $800 to buy that device. You can borrow it if they have it available. Again, this is a worldwide organization, so this is, they, I don't know if that thing ships to New Zealand or wherever, but that was, that's a cost. There's staff time cost. He said on average, it depends on how far along you are and how much work you can get volunteers to do. Sometimes they have volunteer committees that basically put 90% of the application together. The application is anywhere on the short end from 50 pages to, on average, 100, 150 pages. Mostly the committee who's interested in, you have to have buy-in in even order to move forward. So if there's not buy-in, then we're wasting a lot of people's time. But yes, you don't, you don't have to pull the trigger, so to speak, till the very end. You may decide at the end, we've done all this inventory. It's just too costly for the city to go forward, so you decide not to do it. But you really don't get anywhere unless you actually do the inventory, see if you can form a committee of folks who really are interested in this, that can be educating, you know, other folks. But yeah, there'll be, on average, I think, a couple hundred hours, 200 to 300 hours is what he said average is to put an application together. Ideally, you would get a committee of volunteers to do, you know, some of the legwork.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on something.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would move, I presume there's a motion already in here, I'm sorry, I didn't look at it. Oh, I move that staff be directed to, number one, try to, oh, staff disappeared. There you are. Number one, try to form a committee. We need to know if people are interested enough to do this before, you know, we move too far. And if that committee gets formed, then I would direct staff to do a light inventory.
So the motion was to do a, form a committee, a volunteer committee, and then to do a light inventory?
Inventory.
Okay.
Second?
Second?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
We have a motion on up, upcoming of council dates.
Your Honor, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Monday, October 19th, and Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, be held in the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other need, other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak for him and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have George Schroder.
I had to pick the night to come, right? Okay. George Schroder, 244 West Virginia. Rapid fire. So we need more communication on your community activities. I've got the focal point, I've got the AJ Facebook app, I got, you know, whatever. I'm not getting any of your communications in terms of these activities. Touch the last one. My first thing, I came down in '82 to visit a friend, Joe Bonanno. Anyway, come through Tucson, the bungalows, the lighting was perfect. I thought this was like a great western city from the 1800s. It was beautiful, little, like, they looked like little campfires, not lights. It was beautiful, that was in Tucson. So I thought this is what I was coming to. When I first came to Arizona, that's what I thought I was going to live in. Welcome to Apache Junction. So you're dark skies, we don't have to go to Fountain Hills, but it's a good reference. We can go to Gold Canyon. Over 20 years, 25 years, 30 years, I've watched it grow. I lived out there. The top of the mountain, it was wonderful. So I see all the lights that have come, they're still minimal. Maybe they can afford these nice things. But yeah, you want to reflect what's there, what's here, and what's there. So we need to do more than just look at there and there. With, in terms of the lighting, I like it, I like the idea. We need less lighting. And then we have security concerns, because your good neighbor policy not working out so well. I'm living proof. I try to be a good neighbor. I have a new neighbor, and let's see how that goes. I cut her a tree for her today, she's happy. The Brookfield entity that's going down with the annexed land, I don't know if that's a requirement that we have to have, I don't know if it's a done deal. I just think that we're not going to get any benefit from that. We're going to get all the liability, we're not going to get the taxes, that's going to the airport, make no mistake about it. We're not going to see any benefit. We do need to see more business, but. I'm glad we got all the appointments to the boards. I've been requested to be on a few of them. I don't have the time, I got my hands full, thank you very much. Congratulations to the people who got elected, and sorry for if you didn't.